It's 6 o'clock, October 8, 2019. I called over the City Council, regular scheduled City Council meeting. Amanda, would you call over, please?
Counselor Breonis?
Present.
Counselor Winn?
Here.
Counselor Sine?
Here.
Counselor Connaught?
Here.
Counselor Meyer?
Here.
All present.
And Counselor Winn, would you say the bar, please?
Oh, Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the cool weather this morning, allowing us to see what it feels like to have a green morning. We ask that you would be with us today to give us patient wisdom, knowledge, and understanding so that we can accomplish the task we're forced. In your son's name, we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amanda, has anyone signed up for citizen comments?
Yes, Richard Sauceda.
Richard Sauceda.
Good afternoon, council members. Just real quick, thank you for the opportunity. Name is Richard Sauceda. I live in 712 Haddon Park on North Pitt Street. Mr., I guess intern, Mr. City Manager, Mr. Bratton. We've had your acquaintance before, and I hadn't seen you since, so I'm here for just a certain item that's very important to me. And I can see we have our press set up the way we asked for and the way we, people were uncomfortable about. So that's good. Make sure everybody can hear this, make sure everybody can see this. The reason why I'm here is because a couple of meetings back, I've missed a couple, but a couple of meetings back, there was a saying out of an individual that was said to our city administrator. And you deserve respect, everybody deserves respect, including yourselves, including all City Council members, especially our citizens of Kennedy. I've been in trouble, that's the last time I saw you. And I've been, it's been good things that have happened to me since then. Okay? But the reason why I'm here, like I said, is I've got a folder here that I've got a lot of important information, like I said, when the time comes. And today is a little bit of a time. It says, "Here no one is above the law," that includes me or you. And when I mean you, I mean anybody. The citizens of Kennedy deserve answers when they deserve answers. They deserve the truth when the truth needs to be said. Any serious wrongdoing of any administering or administration can and will be investigated and addressed. It is owed to our citizens of Kennedy and our taxpayers. No ifs, no buts about it. And I think all citizens of Kennedy, I mean of Kennedy, all citizens should be united in demanding these requests that I'm about to request, that I'm going to ask, ask to I have the right, like our citizens of Kennedy has rights. I deserve, and the citizens of Kennedy deserve, open request for a complete copy, and I'll make my point, of a former employee, Miss Cindy Sines', full personal file. I would like any and all information releasable by law. I would also like copies of open records requests submitted by any City Council member or the mayor from May 1st, 2019 to present. This includes any, all requests submitted whether via email or handwritten request or any other form of communication such as text or any other form of communication. And the reason why I ask for this is because we, we know what happened as far as some individuals, how it was handled, and I want to make it clear, it was said, it was told that it was too late to take care of this matter. It's not too late. Citizens of Kennedy, believe me, it's not too late. In the closed session, how it was handled, that's by ordinance, that's by policies, I have no idea. But what I'm saying to the citizens of Kennedy, you deserve these records too. You are, I mean, you can ask for these, these records by law. Nobody can tell you you can't, or get out of here, or you don't know what you're talking about, or nothing. By law, you can have these requests made and delivered to you or handed to you. Believe me. On this matter, I think that if you're representing the City of Kennedy, whether it's intern, outturn, upside downturn, I don't know exactly how, but sometimes we ask some people that come in and say, "Well, who are you?" It was asked to Mr. Bratton the other day. "Who are you? Can you present yourself?" You know, there's people that don't even know what's going on sometimes here. This is not a place to attack anybody as far as attacking disrespectfully. This is a place to try to say the truth, speak the truth, and that's what these people represent out here. They're not here to get attacked. But that's why I say, if you break the law, no one is above the law, me, myself, or anybody.
Thanks, Richard.
That's all I've got to say for now. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes, sir.
That's it? Item number six, Consider/Act on Consent Agenda. Is there anything on there you guys want to discuss?
I'd put out, Adam L., Street Department reporter.
L.?
Yes.
Anything else? I wish to visit on C, City Council Minutes, and D, Code Compliance Report. You guys have anything? No? City Manager, Chris, City Council Minutes, why are we behind on that?
Last month, I was not able to do minutes for the fact that I was having to get ordinances together for the meeting, and that's why I got behind. And so that's why this month I caught up on all those minutes.
You understand, we just got some of those minutes today, right at 2:75 this afternoon. But we're expected to come in here tonight and accept those minutes when there's no possible way that anybody sitting up here had the opportunity to read those minutes, cannot verify those minutes. So to ask us to, you know, just to consent to those, there's no way. Those are going to have to be put on, in my opinion, next meeting. And then whatever we need to do to make it easier for her to keep up with the minutes on a regular basis, you tell me what we've got to do. But I definitely know we can't run month behind, month behind, month behind. D, Code Compliance Reporter. I, you know, if we get stopped by a police officer, they come up to the car and they give you a citation for a warning, or they say, "Hey, slow down. This is what I stopped you for," and they give you some kind of authority that they're enforcing. With code compliance, I don't know what we're doing. I don't know what we've ever done in 20 years. But what I notice I'm getting is people are calling me saying, "Hey, so-and-so said this, and so-and-so said this, and they told me I had to do this, I have to tear this down, and I have to do that." And I said, "Well, they didn't give me paperwork." They said, "No, they didn't give me paperwork." I just think that instead of just saying what we think, we might want to put some meat behind it, put the authority that actually it provides, you know, whatever the code provides. If it's, hey, you can't do this because of this, here you go. And I mean, maybe we're doing that, maybe we're not. I'm not aware of what we're doing. Not that I have to be, but I don't think people are calling me because we're giving them anything to, anything to actually look at it and say, "Hey, this is what you're violating," or "This is potentially what your problem is." I understand what we're trying to achieve. I just think that if there's something for them to actually look, look at and understand, that they'll get it. Right now, they don't get it. I don't get it. It's happened to me. We say what we think, but there's never anything, here you go.
Joel, can you come explain how y'all are doing our code compliance, if you don't mind, please?
Yeah, I'll never put him on the spot.
He'll give us an explanation we're looking for, though. If we're confused about anything, Joel can explain to us what's going on.
If there's anything that we can do to help improve that, I think we need to do it.
We'll, we'll handle that.
Okay. Joel's here, you can explain.
We're working on trying to get things back where they need to be.
Yes.
Not necessarily the way it has been done, but...
Yes, sir. Appreciate it, Joel. Y'all keep up the good work. Y'all are doing a great job. I understand it takes a while to come back from being so far behind, but in time, it will get where it needs to be, and just continue to do what you're doing. You're doing a great job.
Joel, one question.
Yes, sir.
The collection station.
Yes, sir.
I know we talked about expanding the hours. Have we put that on the, our city page or updated the pamphlets?
We talked about that.
Come on in here, Mr. Joel, so the citizens can see, sir, this is what this podium's for, so we can speak.
We talked about expanding those areas, and I think we have a way to do that.
Okay. Okay, I just...
And we are looking at planning that. He was going to get back to me this week on that. But we figured a plan for that expansion yesterday.
Okay. I know where we last commented. So it's changed from that?
Yeah, we're going to change it.
Okay, gotcha.
And we're going to get that published, probably put that out in the paper and on the website. You understand what I'm getting at, right?
Yes, sir.
All right. Anything else, consent agenda?
Street Department report.
Street Department report.
Anybody here from the streets?
Yeah.
Hey, Mike. Okay, there you are, Mike. Oh, the East Main project, is John, is John...
John's here. Oh, he could talk about that.
Okay, it's, I'm going to ask this, I'm going to ask this question because a lot of those people down there at East Main have been coming to me asking for clarification about pieces being put here, the driveways being lifted there, their coal, one of these culverts. Maybe since we have a video going, you can give a very explanation of why this is happening and how long it's going to be, what process is going to be a temporary, and exactly how the project might finish at the end, how we look at the end, so they're not confused anymore. They've been asking, some driveways have been lifted, is it going to stay like that? Others are, is there any work going to be done here? Where exactly is the water going to go? And now I'm hearing some is going to go back towards the creek, and I recall the plans that are having that. So if you can just clarify a little, just a quick summary to clarify that?
Sure.
Okay.
Good evening, council members, mayor, everyone. Right now, a portion of East Main drains is in head to western of the street. Half a block or so may be, uh, in progress with our pavements. The majority of the water is going to go east and then north to Escanee Creek. The plan is, is cause for the water from the south side, there's what we call crossing, over crossings of road. To pick up any water on the south side, it's going to go to the north side, and it's going to be where we have a partial ditch in there, and then it's going to be conveyed through a pipe system underneath all the driveways, continue east, and then another concrete box at the end of the job, and it's going to go north all by the pipe. And so, right now, portions of the streets where they put the crosses of the, of the pipe holes, the pavement is exposed. It's exposed. This is a temporary deal. Same with the private driveways. In the plans, all the private driveways will be reconstructed to the original condition. Right now, because we want to get the drainage work all installed first, and then once all the drainage system work is installed, then we come back with the surface items of the driveway. Right now, while the weather's still good, let's get all the other driveway done first, and then we can paint the surface.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
So it's going to get uglier before it gets better, pretty much?
That's correct. There's a little bit of dust, you know, so we have to, the utilities, the drivers' utilities have set the job at approximately about a year to fifteen months for unforeseen, for unexpected. Now, it's progressing. There's still a little bit more work and drainage work to be performed, and then we begin to, do the service.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Tom. Appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to visit on the Police Department report. Again, Mr. Bratton. I requested accidents, collision reports and things like that for a specific amount of, a specific time period. I've never received those. And anything that is not, that I'm not privy to by law, I understand that, but I don't want to be ignored. So if, if I can have those, I'd like to have them, and I don't want them for anything other than... That's part of our job. This council needs to know how many accidents we have, and it's not just the Police Department, it's any accident that happens anywhere. I don't know if we need to include that as a monthly report. You're looking at accidents involving city vehicles? Any accident. Accidents throughout the whole city? Throughout the city, as far as any property that belongs to the City of Kennedy, collisions, personal accidents while we're on the clock, things like that. I think that's something that we need to just look at and understand what we're doing. I mean, we write all these policies up here, but how do we really know we're following our own policies? You know, so that's just something that I'm just looking at. We could, it'd be pretty simple just to add that as part of the consent agenda, if you will. I think so, too. So we'll get what you need, and this week, and we'll start adding that as part of the consent agenda. Okay, thank you. Hey, and then the, the agenda, the consent agenda overall, again, a report that I think is very important to all of us is the attorney report. Is there a reason that we cannot have that report each and every month?
The attorneys have told me that it was client attorney privileged information.
Right, but a privilege is a privilege. We're privileged to it. We don't have to share that report, but we can share the report, right?
It's, it's public information, but that's an exception to the, um, public information. The, the billing has certain notations with regard to the legal services that the city has, has requested, I think. So they would have to be, be adapted in a sense if they were going to be disclosed. So it just depends what, you know, the city, some say, has in consideration. It's a total amount, or is it what the legal services are being done for? It, it all depends on the city. But with regard to anything produced to the city, then it's, it's public information. So I'd hate to disclose something that's not redacted. So it's, it's a, if it gets, if it gets on the public, then the redacted material is on. But otherwise, it has, it has some attorney client privileged communication.
Bratton, when you say attorney-client privilege, that's a privilege. That means we don't have to share it, and it could be redacted, but we don't have to redact it. If somebody decided that it's not confidential, it's attorney-client privilege, is what you're saying?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so if the taxpayers pay for this service each and every month, then we want to know who's calling the attorneys and what attorneys they're calling. There's an itemized bill of all those things. This board should be looking at that every single month. They shouldn't, I mean, I shouldn't have to call and beg to get a record. I mean, I'm not going to throw it out in my audience and say, "Hey, look here, guys. I just want to know if we got a $20,000 bill one month, why? Did James Sutton call 10 times? I know for a fact, I saw a bill, and it has my name on that bill, and it says that I contacted a specific attorney on a specific item, and I know I did not. I had never discussed that item with any attorney, but it's on that bill. Those are the things we need to be looking at, and it's not you, and you weren't even here on that bill. But we need to look at that. That's our job. So whatever the legalities are, share with us so we can make sure that everybody up here, they have the opportunity to look at those bills every month.
Yes, you have, you have the opportunity with them, with them being redacted, and if, and if they're, so we request that they don't be disclosing unless they're redacted because that's, that is communication. But yes, can the council, the city can see the attorney's book, that's...
We could include the disclosure on there, right? Confidentiality disclosure when we give them out here?
Yes, yes.
Hand them back at the end of the meeting, I mean. I just want, we need to be looking at that bill. It's something we've never paid attention to, and we need, I think we need to.
Sure, that's, yeah, we can do that.
Okay. I appreciate it. Thank you. Anything else? Well, Sutton, you covered every one of them. Are we ready to act? Anyone?
So I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda minus the City Council Minutes.
Not seconded.
Any other discussion? If there's no other discussion, please call the roll.
Counselor Breonis?
Yes.
Counselor Winn?
Yes.
Counselor Sine?
Yes.
Counselor Connaught?
Yes.
Counselor Meyer?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item number seven, consideration of possible action in regard to the option provided by Hanson Engineering Services for the East Main Street paving project. Any presentation? Awesome.
I make a motion to reconsider item seven on the agenda?
Awesome.
Go ahead, John.
I pass out to D's the understanding of what it tells here, of some drawings of the cross section pavements, and I've provided basically three options for consideration for you guys to think about and maybe approve. The first option is adding cement to the existing roadbed, which strengthens the roadbed, adding about six inches of limestone base, and providing what we call a chip seal with two-course service treatment. That's option one. And that's at a cost of about $328,000. Option two is what I'm leaning toward recommending, and that's, that's the same, the same thing as option one, which is adding cement to the existing roadbed, because we have cord, the pavement cords at East Main, and it has enough depth of existing material, not only the strength, I just know it's, there's material there. We add cement to the existing material, strength, and get a better footprint of the roadbed. And then we have, we then provide additional six inches of limestone base, which provides a perfect overall pavement structure, and then the one-course chip seal, and that's acting like a moisture barrier. And then instead of the chip seal, at the final riding surface, we put the black top of what we call the hot mix. That's approximately two inches thick. And the last option...
And how much does that option cost?
Oh, I'm sorry.
$396,000.
Say that one more time?
$396,355,30.
And that's the estimate of the cost. It'll all have to go to bids and things like that. That's a good anticipating point. The last option is we take everything out, take, excavate eight inches, and then we put in a grid as footprints, and then put back additional eight inches of lines. So in other words, I can remove and replace. And then we add the, a moisture barrier, and then two inches of the black top or hot mix.
But you don't put in the concrete?
I'm sorry?
You don't put in the concrete in the third option?
No, sir. No, we don't. This one I recommend because as we've been finding out when we install the drainage, we're going to run into abandoned utilities. And the last time we hit abandoned, you have an abandoned gas line. And even though it's abandoned, Center Point Energy has been telling us to use caution to treat it like a live line. And so we run into one case so far when we did the drainage work, and it took, you know, some coordination from Center Point Energy, our contractor, the subcontractor, they had to carefully punch a hole, and then it's basically to see how much gas, what they call the, not really release gas, but it's gas that will get, get out of the system.
How much gas is still in the line?
Right, in the line. Because when we replaced, when we replaced the abandoned line, they just cut it off. They didn't flush it through with water and anything like that. So there may be residual gases in the line when they put the, they installed the new gas line. But that's, that's the thing that may occur, or any other abandoned, so that may be unknown. And plus, anytime you excavate, you're basically digging a hole, and for residential, a residential area, I really do not recommend it at that time. I was asking for more additional headings that may, that may occur. Not that somebody will occur, but they may occur. It depends who the contractor is, that has lots to do with it. And that's why I'm leaning toward the option, option two, because you see that treatment material in place, it can be opened to traffic the same day. And if it rains, it sets up in about half a day. So we don't have to worry about anybody being stuck in that. It's great, it's great to do.
It's a stabilized base once...
A stabilized base right off the bat. That's correct. And basically, like I said, the difference between option one or option two, the same construction procedure, one of the things we're looking at is the final riding surface. You have a tar and rock, or you have a nice riding surface of hot mix for the residents. I know they've been thrown a lot, but this is the final phase for East Main. The plan is, depending upon some action, whatever option you guys choose, that we in Hanson Engineering can finish the plans in a couple of weeks, and go out to bids and things like that. So that ways that train, as soon as the drainage project is complete, we have a contractor on board to begin the roadwork. And that'll be the last phase. We don't get anything like that between construction, so we continue this construction on that roadway till we complete. And that's what I've said along to the, to the mayor, and I've been it before, some of the council members. That's been my plan. Over a year now. And this is the last, last part of the phase for that particular...
And as far as the maintenance component, the difference between the one-course surface treatment versus the two-course surface treatment, are they pretty interchangeable as far as lasting the same amount of time, as well as is the Street Department comfortable with fixing option two versus option one? Or is it a preference for, are y'all capable of doing both options?
Generally, most, most communities are not, they don't have the, the equipment to place the hot mix interior. Most local governments can apply a chip seal, because a chip seal has a special tank, you spread the oil, and then a special, according to spread rock. And then they just roll it with a tire or pneumatic roller. So almost all local governments that I've been involved with use that for maintenance purposes alone. That's, that's what most local governments are geared for. And so that's why, they have a chip seal, they can maintain it. The hot mix option is a kind of a specialized deal, and a few contractors can do, it takes a different amount of equipment that most local governments do not have.
So can I, just to get that correctly, so you're saying the hot mix option, which is option number two, is...
One, hopefully, yes, there's two or three.
Okay. So, but realistically, it sounds like the best options, you're either option one or option two, because option three could have... is option three could have unexpected surprises, which would make it cost even more. So realistically, at least in my opinion, we should consider option one or option two. What I'm trying to figure out is, is for our street department, which option is more realistic for them to be able to maintain with the equipment that we have here for future troubles coming up in the future? But if I understand you correctly, you're saying option two, that small local governments don't necessarily have the equipment for?
That's correct.
So should we consider then option one, if that's something more comfortable that they're used to fixing?
But they can, they can patch the hot mix with the chip seal in the situations that we normally would be dealing with. Normally, it would be a pipeline they had to dig up or a pothole or something like that. They can patch that with the chip mix until there's a time that we needed to recote that road completely.
That's correct.
So if there is, let's just throw out an example. If they're doing, they're putting in a water line and to cut through the roadway, or they have to fix a pothole, and if they're not fixing it with the same material, does that disrupt, disrupt the integrity of that streetway now because it's two different types of materials?
The potential is there over time. I was going to mention the hot mix with, the hot mix option, we have both options, options one or two. But we're looking at minimal where no maintenance for five to seven years. Every road, whether it have the chip seal or the hot mix, the measure is going to require maintenance. So if you place the hot mix item down, it's going to let the miles equate for about five to seven years. But come time to maintenance, if you have the chip seal over, over time anyway, unless there's a contract to remove the hot mix and replace it again. With option one, the chip seal there, that's easier for local governments to have, to maintain because there's nothing removed. After, after the surface has been oxidized, we just place another layer of coat over it, and you're done, you can maintain. It may extend the life of the pavements. It could be the same for option two, but you're going to lose a nice worrying surface over time.
Hey, John, I'm going to throw this out here. I want you to have all the information that I believe. If you think I'm wrong, let me know. Nobody does this anymore in two-course, that's ancient. They've discovered that you don't go on top of raw material unless you just don't have money. What you're asking for with the two-course is nothing but maintenance. These guys will never repair property, ever. Hot mix, they're going to repair property. They'll saw it out, they can heat it if it needs to be heated, and it'll go right back in. Two-course, I wouldn't even put it on it. That, that's my opinion, and I've dealt with lots of, believe that. The savings isn't significant.
Oh, I agree. I just want to make sure that we're able to maintain it, not just look at a nice road for five to seven years and then start deteriorating.
Right, 20 years ago, Justin, this is the way that everybody did it. They didn't know any better, and they said, hey, we're going to two-course. Oh, yeah, we got two-course. But they would also single-course over it. And if you notice in two, it calls for a single-course. And if you single-course it, I, I don't see cut and fill, that, that kind of concerns me. But you're saying because in option three, if we cut and fill there, we have abandoned lines that are there? In my opinion, in my opinion, those abandoned lines shouldn't be there, they should be removed. And I would go with three, and I would go with the geo grid. I understand, we got 80 years of abandoned things there. Number two would be great. The cement stabilized base is awesome, but my, my main concern is core samples. And you said we did core samples, right?
Yes, we took core samples.
How many did we do, do you have any idea?
Three, three.
That, that's another big deal, you know? I think we need to do a few more core samples. That's, how long's that road?
It's only about 1700 feet, maybe 1700, 1750 feet.
Yeah, we've gone, we've gone through some other roads, and I know every, every road's great, but it's hit or miss. Some, some samples are great and some are poor.
That's correct, it's my whole road, right.
Right, and if we go back over it, off of three core samples, it, it kind of worries me because we're talking about 400,000 bucks.
Okay, so I'm misunderstanding. I thought in option two, they were going to take the road up.
Yeah.
Oh, no, sir.
No?
That's only option three.
That's correct.
That's why they're doing the concrete, the concrete.
So you're going to put concrete on top of the existing road?
They'll mix powdered concrete with the existing asphalt and dirt.
We're going to mix powdered cement.
I understand.
And everything together with existing material.
So you're going to, but you keep saying mix it. In my mind, and, and it's just my mind, so don't, nobody be offended, in my mind, if you're going to mix something, you got to have some granules.
That's correct.
And the road for me is, that's the road, and you going to mix something on top of that? Or you going to pull that up and mix it in?
We're going to go from, from the surface here, we're going to go below six inches and mix everything up.
Well, that's what I just said, and y'all said...
No, they want, option three, from my understanding, y'all are going to get it down to the dirt.
That's correct. We're going to remove what's there, with, option three.
I'm talking about option two.
Oh, okay.
Option two...
They're just taking a...
You're going to take six inches of existing asphalt out and remix that with concrete?
No. The six, the six inches of existing material is going to stay in place, and they're going to mix in cement and, and, and the existing material.
Basically going to till it. Till it in with the asphalt and lase, makes all the getting that way, comp it up.
That's correct.
Reuse the material.
Yes.
We're going to reuse the existing material, we're not going to, we're not going to take it out and put it in new. We're going to reuse.
Again, I'm, I'm understanding, but you're still saying, I mean, that's what I'm asking. You're going to use the material that's there. You're going to pull it up and mix it with...
Cement.
Cement and put it right back down.
That's correct.
All in one, all in one step. But you're still going to pull it up. You're not going to mix cement and toss it on top of it.
Yeah, that's, that's what it does. They put cement on top, add water, there's a special mixer, it mixes everything together. The cement, the asphalt, the base, all in one step, it mixes everything together.
So how do you get the asphalt's mixed with the cement?
There's a, there's a special grinder that grinds everything.
How? That floor right there is asphalt. How do you get that asphalt and the cement together?
They have, it's like a, a special hood, like a hood goes over it, and it's got these big tines, and mixes everything and keeps it up.
So it digs it up?
Digs it up, right, that's right.
Okay, that's, that's, that's what I'm saying. You, you're going to take it up and mix it and put it back down.
No.
It's going to mill, it's going to mill. Like they're doing on Boone Street right now, all the going streets going up to St. Mary's, they're milling it. So they're just grinding it up, but now he's going to add cement to it and water. It's just going to stay, it's going to stay in place.
Stay in place.
They're not going to pick it up, move it somewhere else, mix it together?
I, I, guys, you're a precious acquire, I understand that. I'm just, he, you know, what he's saying is giving us the, the, the vision that, I mean, all he's going to do is just put concrete on top of the asphalt that's there, but that's not what you're going to do.
No.
You're going to, you're going to, you're going to till it and put it together, and that's going to become one solid piece.
That's correct.
That's what you, that's why I'm, I'm asking that, so that people can understand it. Because you're not clear. You're not clear at all. We're going to spend $400,000 to do this, it needs to make sense to us as a community why we're doing it. So you're going to, you've got a machine that tills into that asphalt that's there, pulls it up, mix it in concrete with it, and it goes right back down. I understand you're not going to take it and put it somewhere else, but the process of making that happen, you pull up what's there and mix it and put it right back.
Yes, your honor.
Okay.
And then on top of that, you're going to add six inches of crushed limestone for a base?
New material.
Right.
New material. So then we're going to increase the height by six inches plus the two inches on the...
Eight inches.
Hot mix, so we have a total of eight inches. And I'm sure we've considered the effects it's going to have with the new drainage that's going to be in there, right? Because we don't want to have the same problem after they leave.
That's, that's correct. Some of the drainage is very shallow right now, but that was part of the plan to add the material, to provide additional cover on the, on the existing road.
Does this $396,000 for the proposal number two, does that include oversight? Somebody that knows how it's supposed to look, other than me and the guys?
Yes, yes, your honor.
Okay. I just want to make sure so the public actually understands it's not me looking and saying, it's okay, it's not okay.
I tried to put a budget cost in there, includes engineering.
Yeah, I was going to say there's 10% of engineering.
Okay, so, let, let me clarify while I'm asking this. So it doesn't matter if my guys go and inspect it or not? Because there's 10% in engineering fees in there, is what you guys are saying? Everybody understands that? So our guys have no responsibility to inspect it at that point on this project?
Right, Hanson has a responsibility for any inspection.
Okay, sounds great.
But like, like any other job, I always appreciate that, like, for example, the drains, what it means, how, how tansin on a particular, a rider, which is sort of, I'd say thanks to my team.
Right, no, and we appreciate that, but no offense to him or anyone else, but I don't send somebody out there that doesn't know what's this subgrade supposed to look like? And then we're paying 10%, I want to make sure that we understand. I can't send a lot over there and say, hey, what's the subgrade look like? Well, I don't know, it looked great.
Hanson's...
I just, you know, I mean, it sounds silly, but it's, it's reality.
That was the reality, it was the reality.
You can get example, I mean, not examples, but, you know, demonstrations or, you know, something that you can look at, and then you guys can shoot from there, that's what I'm just, you know?
And I'm hoping that we eliminated a lot of questions for you down the road, John. Because if you guys have oversight, then you're good, y'all are engineers and we're not, so it, it should, we should be in good hands. But with all that said, if it was my money and I had to do this and I had that kind of money, it would be option three. And they would be taking out every single line. Whatever company abandoned their lines in there, they would be taking them out. Because what we're not considering is the maintenance. I might not be here, you might not be here.
That's correct.
But when that old gas line collapses and it's done, guess what we just did to that $500,000 road?
We got a sinking.
That's it. And the only way to fix it is get to it. That's why you see nine out of 10 potholes in roads is because of wood. It's decayed wood that got into the product, deep below the surface. They rot out over years, and then you got potholes. So something to consider. I know it's a huge task to take those out, and it's probably almost impossible. Probably take two years to get all that out of there. But I love the cut and fill, the eight inches of removal and replacing, I love it. I think it's the best thing we could ever do.
So what is the extended timeframe if we did option three versus...
I think probably about, probably about 10 working days because...
Which is not much, not as long as this project's going on.
Because it's a short road, and the contractors are very used to handling residential areas.
And this is $115,000 cheaper? So if there were any u-ohs, or here's a pipe coming out of nowhere and it ended up costing more, I mean, that gives you what, $115,000, give or take?
Do that.
Yes, that's correct.
And the end result is, we still have the hot, we still have the hot mix...
That's correct.
On top. The only thing we don't have in three that we have in one and two is the concrete.
That's correct, that's right.
And what's expected to last?
Can you put the concrete in three?
Oh, yes, you certainly can. You can, you can excavate what's there. That way you know for sure there's no questionable material, and you can certainly add the concrete or cement into the mix.
That would be the ideal way to do it, because then, now you have a street, number one, you got all the crap out of it. Number two, you got one that's going to last, that concrete should make it last longer than just number three by itself.
Once you have a good footprint in place, it's easier to build and maintain the paving structure. Most of these with maintenance is designed for about a 20-year life.
Okay.
How long?
20 years, with, with maintenance. Maintenance, five to seven year cycle.
Yeah, got to keep it clean, got to keep the water flowing, not standing and all that stuff.
My question is, if the council does go with option three, then can, what is it, Texas 811 or the, the guys that go out and mark the lines, do they, are they aware of where the abandoned lines are too?
We're, we...
Like, what I'm asking, if we go with option three, can we just go ahead and have all the companies within that geographic location go mark all live and abandoned lines? So we can just pull them out and we know that they're not there?
Let, let's, let me answer on two parts. That's standard practice on any type of construction job is to 811, to locate the lines. The new lines, all new lines, the gas line, the water line, and the wastewater line are deep enough. The only question suspect is the gas line. Because not even the gas folks are sure, they know the location, but they're unsure of the...
Dump, okay.
So we may still run to a gas line again. But abandoned water line or sewer line, they won't be hitting abandoned sewer lines. I know that's pretty, we mentioned that already.
John, let's try this, and you tell me why we couldn't do this. If we get that gas line removed, if that's what these guys decide to do, the cut and fill is, is a real big deal to me. Why couldn't we cut the six inches and then put it back in? Put in a, a new six inches with the, with the treated material?
We can do that, sir.
Put, put the brand new material in place. I mean, you're going off three core samples, and if, if you're comfortable with that, I have to respect that. I just, it, it's another option.
Well, I'm sorry to do that.
I mean, just because we always talk about, every time we dig a hole out here, we see the profile of it, and it's horrible. And we, I'm, I'm just thinking, we got lucky on those three profile, I mean, those two core samples.
Those three core samples.
You know, I, I would really encourage more profile, more core samples. I mean, that would just be me before we spend the 400.
Okay.
Other than that, two and three are great. One, I wouldn't even consider, just because this is no longer, it's not a foundation anymore. Yes, underneath the two courses, but this is now a topping coat for hot mix. That's what we've learned over the last 20, 30 years. Because they used to run out and do a single course, and all we can put smaller rock on top of the bigger rock and make it two-course with another shot of oil. But you never fix it. You get water underneath it and it's over with, forget it. Go look at Lavaca Street, that's a prime example. You seen that one? That's a two-course, horrible, waste of money. Now, 26 or 24 on the width?
Oh, no, that was because there's two, there's two sections that, there's the, the curving gutter section that's around about 24 feet for that one block. But once we go east of Waverly, we have a little bit more room, about 26 feet.
Okay.
To work with. And that's why there's two widths in there. Unless, unless, you know, we can remove the curving gutter and make it all 26 feet, that's it. I had to put that cost under, but it is...
Yeah, I think it'll mess with our drainage, we need that curving gutter. Oh, that's another thing, if we're using that, you do not want water running on two-course. You don't even want to go on a hot mix.
Generally not.
You want it in that curve and in that gutter. And if it, for some reason, we're not maintaining our ditches, our cleanouts, or whatever traps this water, this will never last. That's why you see when water runs in curving gutter, it's in concrete.
How would we guarantee that when we do the hot mix, there's not going to be any cracks? Some companies just go, they crack, they lay the hot mix down and they leave cracks behind. That's why you see highways the way they are and stuff like that. How can we guarantee with spending this amount of money, that won't happen on East Main?
Well, it, it really comes down to the quality of the contractor, you didn't have the...
Can we get, can we, I'm sorry to interrupt you one time. Can we get looks for the bids that are going to go out? We look at the company, look at the history?
Sure.
Before we make a final decision on who goes out for this? Because if it's somebody who doesn't really care and just wants to come in and do it, then that's just a waste of money right there.
Generally, for these contracts, if we put in there a year warranty, a warranty stipend.
That would, we can go into a drought and nothing happens. And then after the drought's done beyond a year, and then it rains and the warranty's invalid. It doesn't do us any good.
That's correct.
So that's what I'm saying, and we're talking about cement. Do these companies that we're going to go out for bids for, do they have their own company with cement? Or do they contract the cement out to somebody else? That's another thing we'd have to look at too, make sure that the cement works on property as well. It's just not a come, lay, slap, and then go ahead and do your thing.
They have a, you actually test the product, right? As they...
We, we can test it, but generally, they put in their text off specs, and they're in a test to keep out the parking lot individuals who've been in the job.
All that's, all that's good, but somebody, who is the person that is making sure that what we paid for is what we're getting? what we paid for is what we're getting? Because we've just got through telling you, we are not the people that can look at that and know that that's what it's supposed to be. We're trusting you to do that, now, if you're not gonna be there, or your people are not gonna be there to check it, to say, this is the way it's supposed to be, who's doing that? We're gonna trust the contractor to do it, or we're gonna have somebody that actually does it?
It'll be, Hanson will have, will need to provide contract administration oversight. And one way to do that is to have, what we collect, what we call the cement tickets. So when the contractor says that I purchased a certain amount of cement, we were able to calculate how much cement is actually placed on the road. That's, that's the only way to do it, to get the material ticket. This is, I certify, for the contractor certifies to him, I've placed a certain amount of material on the road.
John, what's the plans called for on the percentage of concrete? I don't, I don't see it on the drawing? 2%? 3%?
It's generally about 4%.
Okay.
Generally.
See, and that's another, another valid point, I wouldn't know 2% versus 4%. So we're gonna rely on you guys to make sure that that all happens.
That's correct, they gave us the cement tickets, because normally, the cement, they come in these transports, they're about 25 tons. I said, sure.
I, like I said, I understand, I, but when we, when we have a situation where we're doing concrete, we actually have an independent company that tests the concrete as it comes out of the truck, they pull samples as it comes out of the truck, and those samples are verified that they are at the spec that's required. And that's what I was trying to get to, if you have some kind of program where you guys are verifying that what we're paying for is what we're getting, because he's gonna give you the tickets and say he bought this much, that still doesn't say, and I'm not trying to say anything bad about anybody, but that still doesn't say that all he bought went into the machine it was supposed to go into, so that it got into the ground that the sows would get into for our project.
That's correct, you're right, normally, but this is, we can generate what we call the formula, and that's, that's additional cost.
I understand, but if we're gonna, if we're gonna spend this money, let's get everything that we need to get.
We can, we can get samples, we'll have to hire a lab, they run what they call the moisture density, to get an optimum moisture, and a certain strength, they will know for sure...
That they did what they were supposed to do.
The percentage of cement that's really required for that particular, particular base material.
Yeah.
That's an additional cost to get that. Generally, that, that 4% or 5% is a rule of thumb for most materials, like the material of East Main, and it's proven in other communities, other projects, it's performed well.
Okay, anything else? Okay, I guess there's nothing else for you, John, thanks.
So you, you wanted Hanson to get more pavement cord, uh, duct samples?
I'm gonna see what they wanna do.
Oh, okay.
And whatever they capture in their motions, is what we're gonna do.
John, how qualified are those force, the people that foresee the, the project going on when it comes to seeding the road?
Well, like I said, but...
And how many of y'all do y'all have? Can y'all bring more than one? I mean, I know it costs 2%, but if someone's not available, and this is about to happen, someone else come over, just to make sure that this is ready, ready to go?
That's correct.
Because coming from Texas, Texas, I worked in Texas years ago, we'd see this, we'd bring special forces from Portis, they tear up the road, long stretches of the road, and they just tear it up, put the base in, put the cement in, seal it, and then everywhere down that road, there's a project getting ready to go, so you can do that further down the road, to make sure that the, when it's time for the hot mix, everything's smoothed out perfectly, it's no dips and misses here, we gotta make sure that that doesn't happen on East Main, that everything, the sand's gonna be torn up, needs to be torn up, that when you come back in hot mix, everything's set and ready to go, there's no dips or what's about it, that, because we're spending this kind of money, it's, it's a lot of money to have a mistake in there to fix in about a month or two somewhere down the road.
That's why, it's a...
Textile road is terrible.
What is it doing, of course, if they're taking it all out? Because you're going below your...
That's, that's the purpose of everything, that's your footprint. I would just ask for at least three, four, five more quarters.
And what, what extended life does the cement give to this project? I mean, how important is that cement on the bottom, what extended life does it give to it?
It provides a strong...
It can give vocabulary to the people out there.
That's basically it. Having existing material, which I would say, fair condition because of the age, but there is a certain amount of rock, there is a certain amount of limestone material in there, and any cement is a cost-effective measure to utilize what's there in place, is basically what it does. So once you have a good footprint, a foundation of existing material, then you build upon it. They spend the life, they utilize existing material there, and then build upon it to have an overall continuity of life, of pavement structure.
How would this affect the people that live down there? Would they have to be routed to, I mean, different route to get in, or you're gonna do sections at a time?
Well, that's, that's what I'm thinking about.
Like highways, they do a section at a time?
It'll have to be block by block, because just the amount of equipment, it's, to do that mixing and everything like that, it's some pretty large equipment, it'll take up the most, most of the road, but by noon or starish early afternoon, the road is passive, it's rather, it can be open to traffic, because the cement, the existing material sets up really quick. And, once they lay, they sit there, they have to operate really quick, because you don't want it set up, and then have it not shaped to grade. So there's gonna be a lot of equipment, blade, and maintenance, and rollers, and not to mention the cement, polydels, and utilizing material and rubber.
And the rollers, can we make sure that person knows about the equipment, the rollers are in good shape? Because that roller makes a difference when it comes to hot mixing, that's how cracks come in, if the roller's not in proper condition, there's companies out there, like I said, don't care, they're just gonna roll it, but the roller's not even in correct condition, so it doesn't double it out the way it's supposed to?
The specifications called because of the cement, where they have to perform what they call a microcrack, they first could crack it, so they get all the voids in place, everything there in place, and then they come back and type it, call type plate, or shape it to the roof track, and then it just builds upon it. It's a, it's a pretty fast operation with cement. So that's, that's one positive versus excavate and remove and replace option.
So I think it's, I, I believe in Brandon, if you're up to it, I think what we should do is, when we, if Hanson does go out for the bids, maybe create a bid opening committee for this road, you be on it, that way you can ask, you know, y'all can do a lot of research, get it very detailed, since it is your district, and go from there. But with that being said, I, I'm gonna make a motion, it's just what I think is best after learning a little bit more tonight, I do believe, after learning a little bit more, that option three probably, in my mind, is the best option, we can clear it out, we can see if there's any unmarked lines that need to be replaced, we'll start from a very base, we're not reusing material, that has, you know, the eight inches of subgrade, the GeoGrid, the eight inches of limestone, and then the one core surface, the, that we have been talking about tonight, the hot mix, so that's, my motion is to go with option three, with, can we add in four more core samples to that?
Sure, I'll add the concrete.
Do you wanna do concrete, or do you...
Yeah, I wanna add the, I want the concrete in.
Do you wanna, do you wanna do that before you, you know, the cost estimate?
Well, that's, they're gonna get the cost, this is just preliminary now, he's gonna get, that's what, whatever we give him today, he's gonna get the cost estimate.
Right, I just said, now if you wanna, my, my question was, did you wanna approve that option before you give the cost?
Well, we, the option we're talking about...
Is option three, but it's, we don't know the cost of what it's gonna cost with cement.
Okay, but, but I have to intervene, you're using a GeoGrid, you're gonna have to clarify, but we don't wanna stabilize base with the GeoGrid and 16 inches of crushed limestone, do we?
The GeoGrid is...
Isn't it designed to move as needed?
It's mainly to handle, what I've seen in the past, the GeoGrid's helped with the droughts, it's helped with the environmental, it's, so need basically a cost-effective insurance to be placed on the road.
Will it work with mixing the cement with the eight inches of base, no problem?
Yes, sir, it sure will, but we, I've used that one here in this area before, for what we call, more like a heavy duty road, like a hard road, and it's, it's performed well. Well, I would say it's more of a, a cost-effective measure to ensure the overall...
And you said it's a one-year warranty, correct?
Yes, sir.
Why do y'all do the one-year warranty versus the two-year warranty?
There ain't no warranty on no road, there ain't gonna be no warranty, John, come on.
No, we, we use it...
No, they don't have warranties on...
I've never seen a warranty on a road, hey, good luck, y'all blame it on us, but anyway, explain to them about the warranty.
The warranty is there, like any, like any other construction project, there's always gonna be minor defects, and sometimes they don't show up right away, but over after one season, they may show up. And so that's why it's always the contractor responsible to ensure his quality, around one, three, one.
Jesse?
Yes.
If, if I understand what he's doing tonight, we're gonna give him marching orders, and he's gonna go back and...
Solicit for bids.
Solicit for bids, so if we decide, once the bid come back in, we want the concrete in it, then he's gotta do that process all over.
Correct.
Right?
So if we give you option three, and have, tell you, you go out solicit with that option three with cement, correct?
But before I do that, I would advise the council of the anticipated cost, just for, to make sure that everybody is aware...
It's probably gonna be, if I had to guess, what, maybe $500,000? If not, if not more?
Should I comment about running numbers? But I would advise the council first, before, just to make sure the council's in agreement before proceeding during the bids, because as far as designing, it's just a picture that's easy to delete and go back to option three, they won't change a lot of the, the construction drawings and specifications, it's an easy, pretty quick deal to modify the plans.
So you wanna bring us back the plans for three with the cement and without the cement, and let us choose that way?
Correct, so that way it gives you to the council...
Better idea.
And now is that gonna throw y'all significantly off schedule?
No, it's a pretty, it's a pretty, I don't know why I'm here for cement.
So y'all just wanna take no action, and him bringing it back?
I think we gotta, we gotta give him...
Well, he has direction, but there's...
Has to be on a motion.
Okay, I'll, I'll make a motion with agenda item number seven, that Hanson goes back and shows us the cost differences between option three and creating, I guess, an option four with how many inches of concrete? You don't wanna do six?
Not an inch, he...
Or just a concrete recommendation?
Yeah.
And I'll second that.
All right.
Any other discussion?
Thank you, John.
Appreciate it, any other discussion?
Hold on.
Please, sir.
Yeah, please, second.
Counselor Bionis?
Yes.
Counselor Lynn?
Yes.
Counselor Sine?
Yes.
Counselor Connaught?
Yes.
Motion passes, thank you. Item number eight, consideration of possible action in regard to ordinance 19-10, and ordinance approving the water conservation plan for the city of Kennedy. City managers, are there a presentation?
Yes, sir.
All right, let's hear it.
There's a bunch of things.
I know, I saw that.
There were a bunch of pages. What, this is involving our TCEQ work that we're doing to get off of the notice violation. They do not wanna accept the resolution that adopted the drought control, the water conservation plan, they are requesting that it be done by ordinance, and that's why you have this in front of you, you've already done this plan once, the attorneys, the office looked at it, and we tweaked a few things to make it, make sure that it does meet all of their requirements and recommendations, and so we're bringing it back and asking that you adopt the drought conservation plan, the water conservation plan by ordinance, so that we can meet that TCEQ requirement and get that off our plate.
Could we be provided the resolution and the ordinance you want us to approve, and maybe highlight what we tweaked? That way we know...
Actually, the, the highlight recommendations are in the ordinance on the sidebar.
Okay.
There, for what you have, what...
In our, in our packet here?
Yes, sir.
I'm gonna, where's my sidebar?
Yeah, I didn't see that.
Oh, it did not, okay, it didn't come through, I'm sorry, we intended for you to have that, and it did not pop through. You have it on your phone? Okay. We can do that, yeah, we can do that, they're very minor changes, and nothing sucks with it.
Do you have your changes, can you just, is it, is it few enough that we can, you can just tell us?
I'll have to pull that off, if you wanna move on to another item, I can pull that off of my computer, and bring it in.
So we'll just table that for now? Come back?
Yeah, you can just pass the item for now, and then just come back, and I'll pull that one.
Motion.
I'll make a motion, that'll be passed into item number eight, and go to number nine.
Any discussion on that, on passing it? Nope, okay, item number nine, consideration of possible action in regard to an interlocal agreement with Kennedy Independent School District for a school resource officer. Movement?
Make a motion to consider item number nine on the agenda.
I'll second it.
Is there a presentation?
Yes, sir. When we took this to the school board, they were uncomfortable with the 30-day notice for termination of this contract by either party, and requested that they amended theirs to say 60 days, and so we'll bring it back to y'all for approval, that's the only change to what you previously approved, was to give the, to give us both 60 days cancellation on that agreement, if somebody chooses to cancel, that's the only change.
I'll make a motion that we take action and approve the 60-days change for the interlocal agreement with the Kennedy Independent School District and for their school resource officer.
I'll second it. Any other discussion? If there's no other discussion, hold on.
Counselor Bionis?
Yes.
Counselor Lynn?
Yeah.
Counselor Sine?
Yes.
Counselor Connaught?
Yes.
Counselor Lyer?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item, are you ready for eight? Item number eight, consideration of possible action...
No, sir, I'm not.
Oh, you're not, okay.
I'm gonna have to leave and go in and office and...
Item number 10, consideration of possible action in regard to an interlocal contract with the Texas Department of Public Safety for the failure to appear program, is there a presentation on that, city manager?
Uh, yes, sir. This is a contract that the court has requested, that the city approved, what this does is get us involved with the Texas Department of Public Safety and a private vendor that they have picked, where if someone fails to pay a fine, or fails to appear in court, the information is forwarded to the state of Texas Department of Public Safety, and that person then cannot renew their driver's license until they come back to the city and take care of the fine, and take care of their appearance. And it's a, it's a boiler contract that they're sending to all the cities and all the municipal courts, and this then gives us some teeth, because at some point, within six years, they're gonna come pay their ticket.
Any movement?
Contract looks good to you? Brandon, it's up to you. Looks like it's pretty standard.
It's pretty standard, and if you try to change text out language, it's like rolling an older upper deck, but no, it's standard language and it's compliant.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve the Texas Department of Public Safety failure to appear program interlo, interlocal contract.
I'll second that.
Any discussion on that? If there's no... If there's no other discussion, call it.
Counselor Brennan?
Yes.
Counselor Lynn?
Yes.
Counselor Stein?
Yes.
Counselor Condon?
Yes.
Counselor Meyer?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item eleven, consideration of possible action in regard to awarding scholarships to Kennedy High School graduates with funds received from vinyl music festival proceeds. Is there a presentation?
Um, there are three applications that we received.
That's it?
John Wong.
The three that you sent us, is that, that, no one else applied?
No one else applied.
Simple enough.
So the funds that we have, can we just divide it in three?
It's a great idea.
Wasn't it five thousand or four thousand?
Three thousand.
Three thousand, okay, so three one thousand dollar scholarships. All right, I'll make a motion that we do three one hundred thousand dollar scholarships. One thousand dollar scholarships to the candidates that have applied. I'll second.
Is there any other discussion?
We got a motion and a second by Brandon.
Counselor Brennan?
Yes.
Counselor Lynn?
Yes.
Counselor Stein?
Yes.
Counselor Condon?
Yes.
Counselor Meyer?
Yes.
Motion passes. Hey, so how are we gonna contact these people? Are you gonna take care of that?
I can, or if you would like.
Can we do, we should, I mean, we should do. Can we?
I'd like your presentation at the next council meeting.
I'm gonna ask.
Yeah, that would be really nice.
I can stand a little up.
Item number twelve, consideration of possible action in regard to an oil, gas, and mineral lease agreement with Repsol Oil and Gas USA LLC. Is there a presentation?
That needs to be tabled, it's not ready yet.
That's correct.
Motion to table?
I'll make a motion to table.
Second? Call it.
Counselor Brennan?
Yes.
Counselor Lynn?
Yes.
Counselor Stein?
Yes.
Counselor Condon?
Yes.
Counselor Meyer?
Yes.
Item number twelve, uh, table. Item number thirteen, consideration of possible action in regard to the acceptance of the employee evaluation form to be used by city of Kennedy. Is there a presentation on that?
We do have a public speaker before the presentation, but that would be something Mr. Braden will have to do.
Okay, can we get a motion to recess?
Make a motion to recess.
I'll second.
All right. Recess. Have everybody's got their stuff together? Motion to reconvene, please.
I'll make a motion, we reconvene.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Seventeen. Would you like to go back to eight?
Yes, sir. Item number eight, consideration of possible action in regard to ordinance nineteen dash ten and ordinance approving the water conservation plan for the city of Kennedy. Presentation, please.
Yes, sir. Uh, the changes that they're requesting that we make on section thirty-four dash two ninety-five. We're changing the word aquifer management plan to say specifically drought management plan, which puts teeth then back into the fines that are in there, because it has nothing to do with aquifer. It has to do with refer, refer to drought plan, um, to do that. And then it refers us back in thirty-four dash three sixteen, refers us back to those penalties. And they make that a little more, a little clearer when we do that. And those are the only changes that they're doing, other than we call this a drought conservation plan. And then the adoption by ordinance. And we're not changing the amount of the penalties, we're just changing some wording to clarify that this is a drought contingency plan and put, uh, make the enforcement a little easier when we do that.
How do we enforce these things, or who enforces them?
Uh, our water department, our collections department, uh, code can enforce this as well if people are found in violation of it.
You guys have any questions? Any movement?
Make a motion to approve the water. Water drought, uh. Uh, nineteen ten ordinance, uh, for the city of Kennedy, the conservation plan.
I'll second that.
Discussion? If there's no other discussion, call it.
Counselor Brennan?
Yes.
Counselor Lynn?
Yes.
Counselor Stein?
Yes.
Counselor Condon?
Yes.
Counselor Meyer?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item number thirteen, consideration of possible action in regard to the acceptance of the employee evaluation form to be used by city of Kennedy. Is there a presentation?
Yes, sir. Uh, what I provided for y'all were. You want?
You have one held up for this.
Okay.
He can speak.
You have a.
I can speak, I can.
Okay.
Basically, what we had originally talked about brought to a suggestion. And I'm looking at this point, where if y'all are happy with that, fine. If you're not, what's, you know, direction would I, would you give me to, to take that back and tweak it? But in this case, we, we requiring supervisors to rate people on core competencies. On how they're performing in terms of customer service, how they're performing in terms of, uh, general competencies with the city. And then listing up to five specific job skills that they're required to perform and getting specifics on why they're rated. Either meets itself, meets standards, exceed standards, or needs improvement. It also then requires if it's a needs improvement, for them to go in and create a, uh, employee performance plan on how do we get you to where you need to be. And you have to put in dates and actual specific actions on what happens there.
I, I've read through it and I like it, but there's some situations where in the evaluation, you have a category and you have five items in there. And say, if that person gets three out of those five items, you either, you know, that person is not meeting the expectation in a couple of those items. Meeting the expectations on the rest. And that, in that category, you don't have an option to, you know, line those items.
Actually, you, in the five that they choose.
Uh huh.
They can choose one through five. We're gonna recommend that they choose at least three, and that then they average those three scores to get a final score.
Okay.
But you're not required to do five. We just put five blocks in there and said, you need to rate them on three to five.
Okay.
And I can make that much more clear.
Yeah.
There's a minimum of three and a maximum of five. So they at least have a three score average of whether they meet exceed or need improvement.
Right.
And the reason they're blank there to write is supervisor is required to document why that score was given the way it was given.
Right.
Specific.
So they, they leave that evaluation knowing what the weaknesses are.
Right.
What their strengths are, what they need to work on, and a game plan on how they need to work on it.
And if you notice that there's, it's a two-pronged, there's a mid-year.
Right, the mid-year.
April, the employee gets a copy of the evaluation every time it's done. The only thing that the supervisor then keeps the original. And forwards the signature sheet where everybody signed off on, this is what the score was, and this is where we're going, and this is what your improvement plan is. And then that's built on for the next six months to a final evaluation, which will occur prior to adoption of your budget. It will occur in September before the budget goes into effect.
So what are the two months again?
First one is in April, the second one is in September.
And the one in April doesn't go in their H R file?
Actually, it does go in the file as well, because if you've got a situation where you need an improvement to be made.
Well, I understood, I just, I thought that's what I read.
You want that plan to go in file so that you can go back then in September and look at whether or not the improvement.
Yeah.
You're gaining that improvement.
That was one of the things I wanted to talk about, 'cause I thought I read that it didn't go in their file.
The signature pages go. Saying, I've looked at it, I understand it, I know what I need to do on it, that's what goes in their file in April. Then they come back and redo the document, finalize the document in September, then the entire document comes with them to their files.
Right, but that's what I was saying, the April document.
That stays with the supervisor and the employee.
So that's what I did read.
Yes, sir.
Amanda, did you say we have public comments?
Yes, sir.
Are you done with your presentation? Okay. Go ahead. I, I just wanted to make sure you. You're good? Yeah. Okay, well, I'm just gonna say something real quick and I'll be out of the hallway, 'cause I don't have a lot of things to do. That's, that sounds good, Mr. Brad, good idea. That's, sounds very good. The employees that are here, uh, are y'all still here?
They're around the corner.
Yeah, I'm asking them, man. I'm not, I'm just asking them. Can, can y'all step out here real quick, please? Would I come to the city hall, guys, and, uh, as a citizen, just wanna let y'all know? I'm not gonna say it like I'd like to say it, but y'all do a damn good job. Do it as if I'm present, you know, wish all of you were here. If y'all are certified. Qualified for y'all's job. It's the way it should be. We don't need nobody coming in here, well, you know, hey, get certified, ain't nobody certified, and I didn't know nothing, nobody trained me, nothing like that. This is, this is what Mr. Brad is getting at, I think, if I'm not mistaken.
Excuse me, you need to address the council.
I'm, I'm, I'm expressing what the citizens of Kennedy appreciate, Mr. Adolpho. That they do a damn good job. That's, I think there's nothing wrong with that, because they do work for us, we do pay them, like we pay you, Mr. Brad, and the council members here. That's, 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 and, and I, I am addressing the council, that's why I'm here, sir. Okay? Um, that's why I'm saying, all departments. Will be run by certified individuals. We're talking about evaluations, supervisors evaluating. I've, I've supervised people. Mr. Laziga supervised people, he's been, he's been a form of the way. Who's, who evaluates the supervisors? And the reason why I'm saying that, and the reason why I'm bringing that up is because when you apply for a job, and you're on a probation period. You have to follow that probation period the way you're supposed to follow it. That means you're not supposed to miss certain days, or you can't do this, you can't do that. You're being evaluated when you start, when you apply for that job. After your background check and everything. I know how it is. So who supervises, I mean, who, who evaluates the supervisor? The reason why I'm saying that is because if you're gonna have a supervisor that's gonna be evaluating people. Cause it's happened before. I worked here, Mr. Adolpho. You weren't here, I worked here. When you have a supervisor that's evaluated, or at least maybe he was evaluated, that's gonna make. Perverted, sexual comments about women or whatever, this and that, et cetera, et cetera, physically attack another employee. Or verbally attack, verbally attack another employee. You cannot evaluate like that.
That's true.
And that's, no, but it's getting down to it.
If you're gonna speak on the item, speak on the item. I have to caution you that, uh, if, if you're, uh, assigned up to speak on the item with regard to the, uh, the progress sheet, then please stick to that.
And, and I started off by complimenting Mr. Brad on what he's doing, that I think that's the idea that he's bringing across, and I think that's a great idea. So that's the point I just wanted to make. Thank you, Mr. Adolpho.
Anyone else? Okay, do we have a motion? Do we wanna talk about it? Whatever we, we have a motion.
I have a question. Um, so these evaluations are for the employees, where is, are we gonna use the same evaluation for the supervisors? Is there another one?
There's a second one in there.
Yeah, there's a supervisor one in there.
Supervisors, one for employees.
Oh, I'm in it now, okay.
So, and if you notice that the, uh, core competencies are different for supervisors than they are for employees. And we're looking to hold our supervisors to a higher standard.
That's right.
Than we are to regular employees.
Hey, somebody give us a motion so we can consider this.
I'll make a motion, we consider agenda item number thirteen.
Second?
I thought we already did that.
No.
I'll second that.
All right, no.
Sorry.
Yeah, I'm so sorry.
No, it's okay, it's totally fine.
Sorry, I didn't get to look at this piece, um, before today, so there's a lot going on this weekend. So I was checking about this in the right term.
Yeah, we, we actually grade supervisors on more core competencies than the employees. Uh, but then we ask for the same three to five items for each supervisor, specific pieces of their job and how they're doing. And again, if they're, have an area where they need some additional work, we create a performance plan with a specific date on it. And part of that is that the supervisor or the supervisor's supervisor has to buy, has to be responsible for helping make that happen.
That's right.
For example, if we've got somebody and they need a, a license that we haven't gotten yet, we need to put a date on that and say, this is what the city will do, and this is what we expect you to do. And then we have to hold our, and we can't ding that employee if we're not getting his license.
Adolpho, have you reviewed it?
No, but there's a, uh, a person from, that's working with the city. There's a secretary. There's an attorney in our firm that does a lot of that. But she's revamped, she's helping, uh, manage a revamp of the policies.
Okay, that was my next question, I wanna make sure, why, why are we revamping policies? Who decided to do that?
Oh, well, something like this.
We're, we're looking at putting this in, we've also found in our personnel policies some conflicting areas that have to be fixed. Where one area says, we do it this way, and the other area says, we do not do it this way.
Okay, but I'm starting to get the feeling that you guys don't need us to come up here once a month, if y'all are just gonna do what you want, we need to know about these things. We're spending, once again, we're spending money on attorneys, nobody's aware, nobody knows anything about what's going on.
This is evidently going on before I got here.
So that was my next question, how will this coexist with the current policy?
It'll, it'll, uh, clarify any discrepancies with regard to probationary current pay or not. When I think there's conflicting sections that, that, uh, need to be, I think that's resolved. There's, uh, performance evaluation is another way to do it. So it's generally, it's, uh, it's, and I'm not the appointed, uh, uh, it's tweaking, making it better, making it easier to read, making sure there's no discrepancies.
If I may, my intent tonight is to look more for direction than for adoption.
Ah, so I was just gonna say, I was gonna say, well, I can't say that I'm okay with this without seeing the policy together. So I can say, let me see this and see this.
My intent is, are we going in the right direction? That's, that's what I'm looking for in my, are y'all happy with the direction we're going, or do you only look at exploring different ways to do this and bring you a couple of options?
So when this one, after we give you direction, we go, everything gets complete, comes back to us, we're gonna do again?
We, we will move back, revise policy with this as a.
And so all the, the other paperwork that's been signed by the employees will be invalidated, disregarded, and they'll have to sign this?
Every, everything up to the date of adoption is valid and stays in place.
Okay.
We move forward from the date of adoption, it's like a clock reset. We say, okay, effective this date, this is what we do going forward.
And we're gonna have a meeting and give them all of the new policy and do everything, so everybody knows, everybody's clear.
There'll be training on it, there will be, there will be specific supervisor training on how you do evaluations and what needs to be moved in place.
Two things that concern me up here. We, we, the cart is before the horse. We talk about all these policies, they're gonna hold everybody to your act, and how we're gonna, we're gonna basically judge them on their performance. But not one time have I ever, in my whole entire time being here, ever seen a job description of anybody here. Does anybody have any of those?
You've seen one that's recommended, uh, that you and I have talked about. That's another issue that we've got to address in the city, is job descriptions for all our employees. And we're actually working on that as well. It's all part of an entire process that needs to be put in place. And it's gonna take some time for us to finish, and we're just gonna put that our way through it.
I, I'm concerned that this, this policy, this, uh, evaluation along with these policy changes are stemming from something that occurred here. Well, how did, how, what drew our attention to the policy and the specifics of that policy out of line, or, I mean, how did we get to this point? Did we just thumb through it one day and say, we need to change this page?
We, we, as a council, got to that point, because we said, after we had the situation with the employee, that we all was hearing all the stuff that he claims he never got done, there was no documentation, nothing showing. And we said, we need a program in place, and we gave directions to. City manager to start working on that program, so we could get this in order, so it would be one that we could actually look in their file and say, okay. Here's where you was trained on this, you signed, and now. here's where you was trained on this, you signed, and now you have created a situation, we did that.
Do you remember which move, the date was?
I don't know.
August twenty-seven? I didn't see those in the minutes, is why I asked. I just didn't pass on to me that this is a priority for the council, we need to continue working.
Well, and, so I think some of that information was in closed session.
But we did give direction.
Yes.
Okay, so the, the minutes would reflect that, if we gave those directions, right, I mean, they should, right?
If it was in a closed session.
If it was in an executive session. Done in closed session, it will not, it's not closed session.
Anyways, but we brought in the city manager to better... You can't make a decision in closed session?
Well, you give the direction, so double A decision. Decisions like this will come to the council.
And anyways, Mr. Brad came in, and he's already taken a lot of his own personal time, he's taken a lot of extra time as well to make the city better since he's been here, and this is one of those things that, in the six weeks that he's been here,
this, this is one of the main priorities, to get the city where it needs to be, and continue getting it to, continue moving forward.
And this is, this is great, to me, this is great. Hold, start holding employees, managers, everybody accountable. I mean, if we need, he, he needs to come for, to us for that, then why do we need a city manager's gonna be coming up to, well, can I have this or have that? It's part of his job.
We're gonna talk about that, Brandon, don't you worry, buddy. We're gonna, uh, and what we're looking for is, if this is the direction we wanna, we wanna continue going, and we'll work, continue to work on the policy, and bring it all together, and bring you back to complete the actual.
I think so, and just make sure, if we're gonna do this, let's do it all the way, and let's do the job descriptions also. So let's start working on those, and getting all this together so it all flows, and so we can see it all at once, and not, oh, here's this piece, and here's this piece, let's see.
That job description will affect the core responsibility.
Absolutely.
So let's have those two, and I think, um, we're going in the right direction. I know we did ask for a new, um, evaluation sheet, I know that was one of the things, we had talked about it in one of the meetings. As far as changing the policy, I don't remember that, but, I mean, if it needs to match the same way, then I agree with changing the policy.
That, that policy, we, it would have to come before council to agree.
Yeah, all of this gotta come back.
None of this can go into effect until y'all approve. Move it? Uh, I'm sorry. There's no movement. Any other discussion? No, what do you guys wanna do, thirteen?
So, just take the action and the staff direction, you're going the right way?
Okay.
Thank you.
Sounds good. Item fourteen, consideration and possible action in regard to engaging Garber engineer, engineering to prepare a bid package, accept bids, recommend a successful bidder for construction award, monitor and manage the construction project for the placement of new taxiway lights at the Kennedy Regional Airport. Is there a presentation?
Yes, sir.
All right, go ahead.
Please, Bruce.
No, let him, let him make his presentation, because it might clear everything up, and then you could just make a motion for what you wanna do afterwards. We're truly, um, mayor, council, the, this is a budgeted item that y'all put in the budget for this fiscal year for the airport budget under capital improvement. Garber engineering are the people who did prior, old prior work on the runway project that is finally being finished. They have extensive knowledge of what we're doing, they have also been approved by the state of Texas to complete the airport landing plan, uh, the airport land plan, which will be a project that Tech Dot runs that will look at future improvements, future use for the airport, and create a plan by which we can move forward, uh, with the airport. The last piece of what the airport board wanted to do, and they did vote, uh, to recommend a Garber today, is to do the taxiway lighting, and it's a new project for the airport. And so they're asking council to approve the engagement of Garber engineering to run that project, to do the bids, and this is our project, so when it comes down to a bid award, award, it will come back to council for that. Got you. Any movement?
I'll make a motion that we, um, would it go, be going into a contractor, awarding Garber engineering to, um, go out for bids, accept bids, give a recommendation to council who to award the bid to, monitor, manage, or manage the construction project of the new taxiway lights at the Kennedy Regional Airport.
Second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? If there's no discussion, please call over.
Council Reonis?
Yes.
Council Owen?
Yes.
Council Science?
Yes.
Council Connor?
Yes.
Council Meyer?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item fifteen, consideration and possible action in regard to implementing a time management system for all city employees. Is there a presentation? The only presentation I have on this, mayor, is that, um, we're looking again for council provide direction. If you wanna see some of that, we'd like to do that, and we'll find several products, uh, do some competitive shopping around, find out the cost could be for that, and then bring back those for y'all to look at and make a decision on, if you wanna put one of those in place. Okay. We have not, at this point, done any research on that yet, and so we're just looking to see if, if y'all wanna do that at this point, and we'll move forward with it.
I think we need something, we need some kind of time management system.
I'll make a motion, we consider agenda item number fifteen.
Second?
I'll second.
Discussion?
I, I agree, I, I think we should look at different options, both biometric and just a general time clock management system. Um, I would recommend looking at Time Clock Plus, it's a company that both the school district uses, as well as the county uses. I don't know if anybody else has any other?
That Time Clock Plus, I think, is what Almo used to use too, it's, it's a good system. You still have the situation where the supervisor has to go in and fix time, but that's just, that's gonna be part of it, that's just the way it is.
But that, as I understand, that is a system the employee can log on, if they get caught coming to work, needing to go to work right now, they can log on through.
There, there's an app, and it's web-based, so you don't have to set it up through an app, but there's an app, it's web-based. Um, and I, and you might wanna ask, uh, the, uh, company, that I believe when you clock in through the app, it like pinpoints the time and location to when it was done, I, I think, I don't know that for sure.
We'll, we'll look into that.
And make sure that when that's done, it is, a notification is put in the system that that person did not clock in at. Because we wanna know, we, we wanna, if that becomes something that we have to look at, we need to know that...
Where the word, what time it was.
And, and why is it, what, what can we, where they can not have to do that.
Well, and I think it's one of those situations where not every employee has that capability, it would just more or less be like, the, probably the police department, and then...
Yeah, and the people don't call.
We'll look into that, try to bring something back, back in the next meeting.
Yes, sir. I wanna say, uh, if I remember correctly, I wanna say it cost the county about, for some reason, forty-one hundred dollars, sounds like the number that it costs for the county, and I think that's, I have, like, a hundred, probably fifty users.
Who get that price? If there's no other discussion, call over.
Council Reonis?
Yes.
Council Owen?
Yes.
Council Science?
Yes.
Council Connor?
Yes.
Council Meyer?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item number sixteen, consider a, consider impossible action, appointing Chris Bratton to replace Barbara Shaw on the T I R Z board. Is there a presentation, sir? The board requires, the, the board minutes or the rules require that the city officials sort of mental. Okay. That's still the reason. Movement?
Make a motion to, uh, appoint Chris Bratton to replace Barbara Shaw on the T I R Z board.
Second.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? If there's no other discussion, please call over.
Council Reonis?
Yes.
Council Owen?
Yes.
Council Science?
Yes.
Council Connor?
Yes.
Council Meyer?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item seventeen, interim city manager's report, go ahead. The, uh, the good news is, the water main extension project, uh, the high-pressure water main has been completed. It is a hundred percent online. The bad news is, we're fixing leaks everywhere, because we now have a pressure where we do. If I'm not mistaken, last weekend was the first weekend, uh, the first day in about fourteen days where we did not have to get called out for a big leak. The beauty of what we're seeing with that project being completed is the, they're tweaking valves now all over town, and it looks like it's gonna improve pressure through the loop throughout the entire city. And it's gonna take us a while to get that really settled down, but, uh, hopefully it's gonna make a big difference for everybody in every sector of the city as we move forward. Um, the sport complex, October twenty-first, we're gonna do a groundbreaking. If you've noticed, things are moving along well out there. It popped up a couple of, uh, little things that we're having to work on. Uh, we're having to reroute the ag pro water line, because when they went to dig up the parking lot, to create the parking lot, we found out the water line was right under where that parking lot's gonna be. So, we're gonna move that to solve problems, future problems. That water line also runs under the, uh, all the playground equipment. So we're gonna relocate that and solve that problem, and get that out of the way, but... What time? The twenty-first, uh, believe, six o'clock. So, please be there, we'll send you a reminder before that. I was told we're supposed to bring shovels. We will have shovels, we'll find shovels, so we can make this official. Well, it's good they were telling us, they said, if we bring our own shovel, then thirty minutes early and they'll paint the shovel for you or something, whatever your plan is. They'll paint them gold, and then everybody, we'll have a photo op, and everybody turns some dirt out there to make that happen. National night out was a huge success, we estimate two hundred and fifty, maybe three hundred people came through. It was the first time out, it was a great, great, you know, we appreciate your support on that. Lots of great comments about the fact that we were indoors, we were scared to death. The fire department came out, in fact, uh, one of the sidebar notes on the fire department being present, national night out, they picked up three new applications for volunteers to, to fire, the fire department. Based just on that one night, we're very happy that that, uh, that that kind of office was, and look forward to next year doing it again. Our employee of the month is Austin Bryant, Austin has been pulling the open work, uh, especially with all this water conversion that's going on, the RL plant workers are doing, uh, with our TCQ, and we're just thrilled with what's going on, and we're happy to make him our employee of the month this month. And that's pretty much it.
And I know you had talked about the airport wanting to do something with us, or something to have they just...
November fourteenth is our tentative date of that, and we're gonna do a rededication of the airport. We just got that date today, and that will be at two o'clock in the afternoon. And we will be inviting dignitaries, uh, of course, council will all be invited, and we'll have a, hopefully a real nice afternoon, and I'll certainly dedicate that to the airport. And just so you know, we've got a real good shot at being named by Tech Dot Aviation as the most improved airport in the state of Texas this year. They, uh, I can't say enough about the work that, uh, has gone on out there, and what they're doing on a daily basis to make that airport work and run. It is really professional, they finished the second coat of runway striping today, and the airport is open again, it is now running twenty-four hours a day. The AWAC system is up and going, and we're hearing all kinds of good stuff from, from folks who are coming in and out of the airport. The, uh, the Garber plan that they'll be doing on the future expansion of the airport will look specifically at how do we get more hangar space. Our T hangar is full. All of them. And there is a waiting list for every spot at the T hangar at now. And so people are really wanting to come into this airport and bring their planes in, and make this their home base in that sort of city.
It is.
So we'll be looking, probably in the next two years, coming back to council with some suggestions for how we expand our hangar space at the airport. The reason that they, uh, just in case, in case we don't know, the reason people come to this airport, um, when they could pick other ones that are kinda close, is because of the job that Ron and his daughter do out there. They provide every amenity you could think of, and, and like you said, twenty-four hours, it is twenty-four hours, and the place is full, there's nowhere to put another airplane. I don't know if we can wait two years, we're in demand. They sell fuel like crazy. Right, the, uh, the project that Tech Dot's awarded should take about twenty-eight weeks to complete, and as soon as that project is complete, then we can start looking at how do we fund the expansion. And there is some money available, um, out, out and about through the state for expansion. We're, uh, we've actively got our ramp program back up, which means that the state will give us fifty thousand dollars a year towards airport improvements. And they'll reimburse us for that. There is another plan out there that's worth six hundred thousand dollars, that pays twenty-five percent reimbursement each year. You have to spend the money upfront, if they reimburse twenty-five percent of that six hundred thousand each year, that's a possibility to look at and move forward in the airport expansion issues. But it'll be twenty-eight weeks before we have that expansion plan in place, so when we know what we can do, how we can do it, and start looking at what that would cost us. But there are people who would love to have us construct them hangars by next year. Nope, you're good? You're good. Okay. Motion for adjourned. Meeting is adjourned.